I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Thursday, January 11th. We will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First? All right. Dr. Smith, you're on.
Oh, it's gonna be the briefest update ever. We are in, we are in January. This is our first official board meeting. We did meet, of course, obviously, for the budget work session. Between the time we met for the budget work session and now, not a lot of stuff has gone on. A little bit of weather, that's been fun. We did our first early dismissal. We did an early entry, or we did a delayed entry, and now we've done an early exit. So, there you go, we're good to go. I did get to do a couple of school visits. Went to Spring Ridge Middle School first. That's with the ESOL class with Ms. McGlothlin, McGlothlin and Ms. Ramos with all their ESOL kids. Actually, that's a class where they pull them out and have a dedicated class, as well as their, then they follow a regular schedule the rest of their day. And it really is great, what a, what a great group of kids. What a, I mean, they are, they are wonderful, they are chatty, they are, there are some people that have been in that group since the beginning of the year. There was one person, this was their second day at Spring Ridge. There were several that joined in December. This is a group of students that have a high mobility rate. But they are, they're wonderful, they're wonderful to work with, really great classroom environment. Spring Ridge is doing a wonderful job with them. Then, we went to the media center with Ms. Dyson, media specialist extraordinaire, where they were giving a lesson with all the sixth graders. It was awesome. Finished with going into Ms. Howes. It's one of the STEM classes, but it's Foundation of Computer Science, and they were doing programming. And when they went in, they said, "Well, pick something you'd like to see, some animation you'd like to see coded, and they'll do it." And so I said, "Well," it was right after the fourth, or right after the January 1st. It's like, "Well, how about the ball drop?" And so they all then went in, and as their project, they just sent me all these great animations of New York City and a ball and a dropping and a countdown. I mean, it's amazing, they're doing great work. Mechanicsville Elementary School, I got to go do some poetry. So, I went with Mrs. Roach's fifth grade class, where we did Shel Silverstein's poem, "The Voice," "The Voice Inside You," which is, which is really awesome. And we talked about all the poetic conventions. And then we ended up having a deep discussion about Taylor Swift. Because Taylor Swift, in fifth grade, wrote a poem called "Monster in My Closet", in which she was nationally recognized. So, Taylor Swift was already, you know, being exceptional in fifth grade. Every fifth grader can be exceptional, and that exceptional quality can come out through, you guessed it,
Poetry.
Poetry. Then, Mrs. Lucas's second grade class, where we also did another Shel Silverstein poem, "Sick", where a young child is, has all of these terrible ailments until they realize at the end of the day, it's a Saturday, and then they're fine and they want to go outside. So, it was a lot of fun. So, we're still getting our poetry fix on. Great things are going on across our school. So, as we go into the budget and the discussions that we have that may be a little bit somber, right? We're not, it's not, it looks like we might come into a little more tighter financial times. We need to always remember that we have seventeen thousand five hundred kids and over twenty-five hundred, twenty-four hundred employees doing incredible work with kids every single day. And that work in schools is, is, is awesome and hopeful and fun. So, here we are in January. We're at a Board of Ed meeting. We get to meet every single week this month. It's a, it's a special time for me, for us. We have no school on Monday in recognition of Martin Luther King and a celebration. We have the Board of Ed Public Work Session on Wednesday night. That is not a normal board meeting. That's just for the public to come out and tell us what they think of the, the budget as presented. And we really encourage people to be engaged, not only in their learning, making sure that they're paying attention to what's being discussed in here, across the street, in the state. That's important. People need to, we need to hear from our stakeholders. Then we have another board meeting on the 24th, and a professional day at the end of the month to round it all out. We are well through the majority of the second marking period, and in two and a half short weeks, we will be halfway through the school year. Pretty amazing how quickly time is flying. So, with that, that's all I got. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Let's see, we don't have any recognitions, public hearing. Do we have any public comment? I see Kim dashing. No public comment. Okay. The consent agenda. I have a motion, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for December 13th, 2023, and January 3rd, 2024, personnel teachers, and there are no administrative and supervisory appointments. So, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. All right. We do not have any action items this morning, but we do have four information items. The first one is Ms. Bachner with the proposed high school program of studies for the upcoming 24, 25 year. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As we start the first meeting of every January, we do with this presentation with the program of studies. I do apologize. When the first Board of, Board Docs went in, we had this slated for ten minutes. And when I saw that, I went, "Oh, no! We cannot do this in ten minutes." So, it has been revised. So, if you were thinking it was ten minutes, I'm so sorry, but it's, it's more like thirty, forty-five.
So, I should, I should not, I should reset my buzzer.
Set your buzzer, please. I, you know, as usual, for most presentations, we wait until the end for any questions. But I am fine. If you would like to ask questions throughout, it might be a little easier than going back in slides. But again, completely up to you. As we have been doing in the last few years, I also, in addition to the slides that will be presented as a public document, did a more in-depth for every single thing that is gonna be presented. If you wanted more information, hopefully, it is contained in that addendum document that you have. So, if you wanted to see more of a description or more of the grade bands and things like that, we've been doing that for about two years, and it really helps both the public and you to know a little bit more about what's being presented. But again, questions are more than welcome, and of course, we'll get started.
Okay, this is not going well. Because Scott took the clicker. Yeah, that's okay. And his thing?
It won't even click from over here?
Nope, it will not. So, I do not know what's going on.
This is the shortest presentation ever. Thank you very much!
I did from the beginning, but it's not moving.
Everybody else is going, "Oh, thank goodness, it's not me."
Right-click on what? Close all windows? Are you sure you don't want me to do that? Because it has everybody's presentations. Mm-hmm. It's not even moving. Want to try view? Scott, you like really broke it.
I, that's probably the best I've ever done, then.
Never seen this before.
I think I know what it is. I think Scott's made another fix in it out first.
What, Scott?
The best part is, everybody needs to know that I do it on purpose.
Sure.
Look at that! Yay! Dr. Mar. And Dr. Mar knows better than anybody else because he's been personally correcting my mistakes for the better part of almost twenty years. So, thank you very much, Dr. Mar.
I'm really glad there's no buzzer now. Because I would be done and finishing up.
Just like I couldn't find the Jeopardy music on my phone.
Exactly, exactly. So, as we always start, consistent with our policy, IGA curriculum and courses of study, recommended proposals are being presented to the Board of Education as required. We are having our first reading today. On January 17th, which is next Wednesday, we will have our public hearing. And on February 7th, I'll come back before you with any of that information for that second reading and final approval of our program of studies revisions. Our review and submission process is twice a year and has been our practice for the last several years, in May and in October. We have proposals submitted by teachers, teacher teams, counselors, administrators, and content supervisors. To also note, there are parents and community members on the team. So, if they actually have a proposal, they actually come to me, and I would submit on their behalf. We did not have any of those in the fall of this year. And then in January and through December, we actually have a monthly meeting of this committee to look at the proposals, and that is what sets our monthly agendas. We held ten committee meetings throughout this year, and those are the states. And calendar invites with attendance information is available. And then we have forty-one active Program of Studies committee members. As I said, they are made up of central office directors and supervisors, principals, assistant principals, teachers, parents, students, and community members. Just some reminders we always want to do, we've actually added a bullet this year to the slide is, the first one is, no course can be taught in an SMCPS high school without being approved for the program of studies. So, nobody can teach anything in our high schools. That is not a part of our program of studies. And then all courses in the program of studies may not be available in schools, and course offerings are based on student course requests and available staffing. And I will let you know that we have shared with all high school principals that as they start working on scheduling and transition, they are to make sure and make clear to all students that students can request any course in the program of studies. Again, sharing with them, it may not be offered, but students certainly have the ability to request that. We've also shared that at Slack, so trying to get the word out to kids that they should be looking at the program of studies when deciding on course requests. And then the third bullet, which is an addition from prior years, is Blueprint now requires schools to show that they are providing a variety of both CCR and CCR support courses and giving student access to those courses. So, every, every time we're looking at something, either taking something out or adding something to the program of studies, we actually do it now with that lens also about access and if is something that would support Blueprint. So, the new courses that we have brought, that were brought to and approved by the committee are AP European History and AP African-American Studies. And those both serve to give more AP courses and access to students for those courses. And that is a Blueprint requirement. Again, the addendum or the supplementary gives you really a lot more details about those two courses. The other new course is African-American Literature, which can be offered as either half-credit or one-credit. And if you remember, two years ago, I came before you with that new half-credit health course. And we're still working to make sure, and you'll see that all throughout today's presentation, we have many courses that are either half-credit or full-credit, trying to make sure that we have really things that students are asking for and students need that back up to that health credit. And so, African-American Literature. Also, later on in the presentation, you'll see that we are asking to remove two English courses from our program of studies for 11th and 12th graders because we're not offering dual, and I'll get to that in a little bit in our schoolhouse. And this would actually offer another English opportunity for kids that, if they so chose. And then we are asking for an independent study, specifically in career and technology education. And it's designed for those advanced students. Students have already went through a pathway in CTE, and they want to do some kind of independent study in that area under the direction of a CTE supervisor, whether it be welding or CAD or things like that. I did talk to Mr. Boyle because I said, "What is the difference between, why wouldn't we have kids do an apprenticeship rather than this? You know, when would you do the difference?" He said, "Absolutely, when a student would apply for an independent study, they would absolutely vet it with the same people that do the apprenticeship program, the AMP program, to see if there is an apprenticeship that would meet that need." The very much difference is, an apprenticeship is definitely 450 hours, whereas this could be 66 hours. So, that also depends on what the student wants and the student needs in regard to independent study. Because that was the first question I had, if that was one of your questions. The next one is a course that I know that sounds kind of pretty funny, Course Study Production and Review. And that is absolutely going from blueprint language because that would be definitely both a support pathway for CCR and an extension. It really gives times, time for that students to really kind of work on things that they need to reach, you know, relearn or projects they need to do. It is non-credit bearing. And, you know, in our day and age, we used to call it study hall. But it's a little bit more directed for students to have that. If you notice, in our program of studies, we already have an AP study hall. But we don't have a study hall for those students who are pursuing general studies. And so, that would fulfill this need and give support to students for CCR as one of those options. Again, we can offer it as both a half-credit and a full-credit. So, we're hoping students will actually take advantage of this next year if they're a junior and this is approved with their health backup to see if it works for them and is meaningful as a half-credit course. And then we have a pre-AP Spanish seminar course, and that is only gonna be offered as a half-credit. And this is basically a continuation for any student who has already had Spanish III or they've already had Spanish IV, but they want to maybe pursue that AP test in Spanish Language and Culture, and they maybe need a little bit of a boost, they feel, a refresher if they've taken Spanish IV. And so, this would be a half-credit course for them to actually try to rehone those skills after Spanish III and IV to prepare for that AP test. Any questions on your courses before we go on to new pathways? Okay. New pathways. Actually, this is a revisited pathway. If those of you who have, many of you, this will be familiar. We are asking to bring back to the table our CASE program, which is the Curriculum of Agricultural Science Education. So, if you hear CASE, that's what it means, the acronym. And there are three or four courses in CASE. We would offer the first one, Introduction to Agriculture, Food, and Natural Resources, that first year. The second year, we would do Principles of Agricultural Science, Animal. And the third year, we would offer two. Advanced Agricultural Science Specialization, Food Safety, Food Science and Safety for one credit, and the Agriculture, Research, and Development for one credit. This, of course, would be dependent on students who register for this class. But right now, we are expecting it to start in 10th grade. So, if approved by this board, we would have next year maybe to start publicizing and get kids on board, especially in 9th grade, to sign up for it in 10th grade. And we have been working with the Farm Bureau, and they're very, very definitely supportive of this request.
The, the big change here between the previous CASE program and what we're proposing here is that this would be a comprehensive high school-based pathway. It wouldn't be, the children wouldn't have to make the decision to spend a large portion of their day at the tech center. They, they will, these courses would be offered directly at each one of the individual high schools.
And this model is now being currently used in Calvert County. And so, we called them and kind of got their input about how they're working it, and exactly what Dr. Smith said is how that they're working this program in their schools. And they, I think, we were told they have about sixteen kids in each of the cohorts, which is a good number.
Does this maybe encourage them to be an animal doctor? You know, veterinarian? Because I saw the animals, and you know, cows and horses get sick.
You know, we do have some students who are pursuing veterinary science, want to do that later. Will take this and absolutely can do that because it is, there is a piece of that. But you're right, it's like, you know, animal husbandry and those kind of things are part, I believe, of the CASE program, not as much as some medical piece. But we do have, in the past, when we had CASE, we had quite a few students who wanted to pursue either being a vet tech or a veterinarian.
And this would, and this would give them a dedicated pathway where they could explore that at their comprehensive high school.
And the College of Southern Maryland is getting ready to start up a program with the CASE model, offering a path to learning to grow crops vertically. And so, this, mm-hmm, vertical horticulture. So, this would certainly prepare a student to move right into that course.
And we knew a little of it. Ms. Allen told us this this morning, a little bit more where it was. It's a lot further along than I thought it would be.
Yes.
Which is why we absolutely would love to have this approved in the program of study. So, then everything's ready, we're ready to go. And we don't have to wait another year to come before you so students have the opportunities.
For CSM, the curriculum is due, from the, the individuals writing it is due this month.
Hmm, great. This is a big change. And I will tell you, we were told that this would have been approved by MSDE before today, and we were bringing this to you. We were told any day in the next meeting, it will be approved. But I will tell you, we're asking for this to be approved. We would never put it in our program of studies until it gets approved by the state, and then we would replace it. But we, again, do not want to keep it from coming before you for approval in case it gets approved February 8th. We want to make sure that we offer it to kids because what this is saying is, you know, we do have fire, emergency services already in our tech center program, and it is flourishing. But right now, the law says we have to have both an EMT, the Emergency Medical Technician, as well as fire and rescue. Students have to take both of those years in order to have the pathway. And this is saying now they only have to take one, which is a big, big difference and a huge gain for both our community as well as our kids. So, we definitely wanted to bring this before you. So, this is basically saying the same program, EMT, that year-one program, which I've never heard from MSDE before, year-one, is actually a pathway for EMT. And then you can have another pathway. In other words, be a dual-enrolled student, a dual-enrolled student, or a dual-completor, I should say, not dual-enrolled, dual-completor student with the fire and rescue, which they would consider a separate pathway. So, students would have then the choice, if approved by MSDE, to take either EMT and have their pathway or fire and have their pathway or continue to take both and have a dual-completor.
Because a lot of the, the EMT course is incredibly difficult.
As it, as it should be.
Yeah, yes.
You really, you know.
I know that for a fact.
Yes.
And, and so the, but there are also a lot of students who really just want to go be an EMT. And so, the, the fire piece is sort of, "Okay, I'll do it." But, so, I, I'm pleased. I truly hope that MSDE goes through with this.
We've had quite a few students in the last, I don't want to say quite a few, I mean, maybe two or three, I shouldn't say quite a few. Two or three students in the last few cohorts of this program have wanted only EMT because their schedules didn't permit them to do the nursing program at the, at the tech center because it's three, two to three years. And they wanted just that one, one. And this would have helped them greatly.
Yes.
Now, we're moving into course name changes. And we typically do this based on MSDE and where they're going. And this is, this is no different from what we're bringing to you. Or, so, right now, we have TV Video Production 1. We all know them greatly because we see Mr. Millam on many occasions. We would ask that that be changed and titled to Digital Media Production 1. And we do have a corresponding in a few slides, description change. That necessitates that. And it more closely mirrors our day and age and that course. And also then, would we move TV Video Production 2 to Digital Media Production 2?
Because it used to be cable, TV, and videotape. And those things,
Are not.
Our kids probably, and certainly our kids' kids will have no idea what cable, TV, or videotape? You put stuff on like Scotch tape?
It's, it needs to be updated.
Yeah.
And then, this is another one. Radio Audio Production needs to be digital audio and podcasting. So, you can see, again, the times are changing. And so, we need to update that because radio really is digital audio now. So, radio hasn't gone away, it's just retitled.
If you don't have a podcast, where have you been?
Any questions before we go on to description changes? Okay. As we are requesting Digital Media Production 1, which is a revision, would have a new description. We put in there the titles that we would use. And I did just want to highlight, I will not read, but the, the big insertion of the description is, "This will include cable, satellite, specialized antenna, fiber-optic coper cable systems, and Internet distribution." So, that's the big new piece of that description for that course.
Cool.
Digital Media, Media Production 2. This group of students is the, are the ones we typically see when they're recording things for us. That's kind of their programming. And again, I just wanted to highlight part of the description as, as part of the local cable company agreement with St. Mary's County Public Schools. "A public educational government PEG access station is located at the James A. Forrest Career and Technical Center and programmed by the school's digital media team." And I think that's a really good thing to highlight and part of the description in what we've been doing. Two more description changes is that the request from Radio Audio Production to Digital Audio and Podcasting. And again, we've added the language in that descriptions for podcasts, Internet radio, and audio theater all, which is a little bit new, and why we're asking for a description change. And then the Office of Special Ed asks us to be more specific in our description of study skills. This is only for IEP carriers, our special education students. It's part of their IEP process and something that goes in their IEP, so other students can't sign up for it. Hence, one of the other reasons we're asking for that other course that we asked as a new course for our general education students or taking other courses that were not AP or if they're not special education, to have the same opportunity for that study period. Any questions before we go and see the course updates? We are asking, and this is related to something Ms. Bailey brought us last year, of can we think about maybe doing some semesterized AP courses? And so, we actually went back, as we always do when you give us feedback. And we, we, we had offered semesterized AP courses in comparative government and politics, but we were only doing that for our Global International Studies students, our students in GIS, and had that larger discussion at the Program of Studies Committee and with Ms. Gill, who's the supervisor of academic, our academy programs, of would it be available or could we make this available to all students and all schools? And we absolutely can. And so, we're asking you to bring this forward to do that. So, just some additional information, and we have even more in the addendum. But if you're a 10th grade student, you would like to explore this opportunity. If you would take this course, you would take, it would be a year-long course where you'd take the first AP American Government and Politics in your fall semester. And then you would take the AP Comparative Government Politics in the spring semester, and it would be two credits. and then you would take the AP Comparative Government Politics in the spring semester, and it would be two credits, you would get that. If you were eleventh or twelfth grader, you could actually just take this as a semesterized course, so you actually could take health, and then take one of these courses, um, as, um, an AP course. So, um, and then students of course would earn one credit if they're only taking one of those courses as a semester. You don't earn two credits, because you're not taking two courses. So I know that's a little bit confusing, so is there any questions on that? But that would bring that opportunity to all students, should it be approved? Um, the other update is Educational, uh, Media Technology. Um, at this time, it is just a full credit option, and they feel that it is absolutely available and could be available to students as a semesterized option, still keeping the full semester, or four-year for those students who would like that, but also offering a semesterized version for students who would like to, um, take that on, maybe take the AP course and with that. Um, and then we do need to bring to you a course update for the Academy of Health Professions. In the past, we have always, um, offered a, um, uh, science graduation credit for students that were in the Academy of Health Professions, because the curriculum matched or mirrored our science standards, but when we actually had the revision of science standards, they don't correlate. It actually impacts, I believe, at this time, two students out of that cohort. So what we're doing for those students right now is Dr. Zimmerman, who is the supervisor of Secondary Science, is working with the Academy of Health Professors teacher to make sure that we're inserting units in for those two students or three students that need that, so they do meet the graduation requirement this year, but she's also working with the teacher to make sure, should this be, well, kinda need to approve this one, because it's a, it's a requirement of MSD, but she's also making sure that we're working with those students, so they're very clear if they're sitting in Academy of Health Professions, and they're maybe a tenth or eleventh grader, that this is not an option anymore, so they're preparing as they schedule. And then the last course update we have is that, um, we have been told by MSD that our AP Seminar course, um, can be an option for students to have eleventh or twelfth grade English in lieu of that. So we are absolutely gonna offer that if students want that as an option, rather than taking eleventh or twelfth grade English, they wanna take AP Seminar, and as you know, most students are designated as CCR by that time, or not CCR. So, one more compu- course update, um, Computer Science Principles. Um, if you remember, we came before you, I believe, last year, and asked that AP Computer Science Principles count as a math credit. We did a full analysis to make sure that could be done in correlation with MSD, and it could. We have done the same thing with Computer Science Principles, it really is the same exact content. It is just spr- uh, it is just truncated a little bit, um, with the time, it goes faster in the AP, and of course, there's an assessment that goes with the AP Computer Science Principles, but this also can count as a, um, math credit, um, but please note, there's a note for this. It cannot c- count as the fourth math credit if you are a university completer, University of Maryland completer. So the students that most likely would take advantage of this is our students who are, are pursuing just that CETE pathway, um, of graduation. Um, and then the last course, uh, I believe the last course update we're gonna share with you is, um, uh, information on our dual enrollment courses. So there are quite a few courses in our Program of Studies currently that are dual enrollment courses that we teach within our high schools. So there are dual enrollment courses with CSM primarily that we teach in our high schools, and then there are some CSM courses that we've approved that are dual enrollment, that are taught on their campus. Um, for next year, Blueprint Funding supports tuition costs for college students, uh, college courses taken on campus on our, or online for students who are designated as CCR or are economically disadvantaged. And I do wanna say that the Blueprint actually only says that we need to be responsible for those students who are CCR for those expenses. Um, the leadership of St. Mary's County Public Schools have added that we would support economically disadvantaged to, uh, students too for those, that, these things. Because we will not be offering dual enrollment, um, courses in our high schools, um, we will be providing bus transportation to and from, um, usually probably using that hub bus schedule with the tech center to the CSM Leonardtown campus, um, each day. Um, and as I said, as a result of these requirements, we will no longer offer dual enrollment credit for classes taught on any St. Mary's County, um, Public Schools campus. I've given you a lot more information about what courses that impacts. The only two courses that we will not teach at all in our court, um, school next year are English ten-ten and English ten-twenty, hence the reason we're trying to get some additional English classes, um, on there, but English ten-ten and ten-twenty, um, most likely will be absolutely taught on the CSM campuses. And we have shared with CSM this plan that we are bringing forth to you today on Tuesday, so that they're aware. Um, and we did ask them specifically if they can make sure that English ten-ten and ten-twenty were offered at their campus, especially during school hours, so students would have that bus transportation to and from. Many, all the other, uh, dual enrollment classes we can offer, it's just they won't have that dual enrollment moniker. Example, we're gonna offer pre-calculus, right? Um, but it just won't have that option to have that dual enrollment, um, for it. Um, but they could go on campus, um, to get that, if they so wanted to.
So, um, for CSM, are they going to then be offering the dual enrollment classes? Well, they only do Monday through Thursday, so, eh, wh- what are we going to do with those students, um, on the other three days of the week?
Yeah, lots of things to decide on that. I would assume for those periods, and we haven't thought that far, Ms. Allen, but I would assume so far we would use, utilize something like those, uh, study hall courses and things like that, where we could put them in some other, um, periods. Or they would have early release, like some of them, you know what I'm saying, they have release and things like that.
They either have early release or late entry, which is what most students pursuing college courses on campus have.
Okay.
But then they have to make sure that they have multiple classes within, on that same day that are scheduled at CSM. But, I mean, because.
I mean, as, as of right now, so we have multiple students that are college, that are, that are, that we consider dual enrolled, and they, they go for their first four classes here on campus, and then they leave campus with the understanding that they're pursuing their college courses some, like, we don't, and if they only meet on Tuesday and Thursday, or Monday and Wednesday, regardless, we, they have an abbreviated schedule with us, they have an early release schedule with us. And that's the, that's the way historically it's, it's, it's always been.
Well, so how's that gonna work though? So if I'm, because your early release schedule is only available to.
Juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors, right? So what happens to the kids right now that are dual enrolled a- as a sophomore?
Well, CSM, will CSM permit, uh, a fifteen-year-old to be in?
No, they will not, we, they only, for on their campus, will take eleventh and twelfth graders. We are allowed to offer dual enrollment in our schoolhouse, because we're the ones facilitating, and oftentimes we will let ninth and tenth graders to take those, um, but we're not offering those.
That's what's ending.
Yeah.
And let's be very clear, the reason why this is ending is because the Blueprint compels the school system to pay the full tuition cost for any college course taken by a student once they have earned the designation of college and career ready. The challenge is that, that we've always offered as a benefit to our students the opportunity to earn transcribed credit for a high school course that we teach on our campus, with our teachers, in our classrooms, with our materials. We've, we've had this, it's been decades and decades where we have had a great relationship with CSM, and if a parent so decided, or a student so decided they wanted transcribed credit for that course, they could pay a fraction of the tuition personally, uh, and it works out to, because they were only charging us half tuition, and then a portion of that half tuition, and so the parent for a couple hundred dollars could get a transcribed credit. And if you are economically disadvantaged, we covered that entire cost. That's the way it has always been, and it's been in a system that's worked very well. The Blueprint came in and said, doesn't matter what your past agreement was, now tuition is gonna be seventy-five percent of tuition, per law, it says seventy-five percent. So the cost goes to seventy-five percent completely carried by us, and the College of Southern Maryland and other community colleges, isn't just the College of Southern Maryland, this is all community colleges.
Across the state.
They said, and on top of that, we have to cover all activity fees, and they said, well, let's make that easy. Activity fees will be twenty-five percent of tuition, so St. Mary's County, you owe us a hundred percent of the tuition, seventy-five percent of the qu- tuition plus the fees. You need to pay us for courses that we aren't teaching on our campus, and we aren't teaching with our instructors, and we aren't providing materials for, you just have to pay us the full tuition. And we don't have the money to be able to do that. So we will go to the actual letter of the law for the Blueprint, which says that the school system is responsible for covering the complete tuition and related fees for college courses taken by college and career-ready designated students, and that's exactly what we'll do.
So how many students do we have enrolled within our system? Meaning that they're taking class, dual enrolled classes within our buildings taught by our teachers, versus how many are actually going on campus?
I can get you that data and share that with you as a communication update, I think we can absolutely get that data for you.
Because, because what this has done, just, I, and I appreciate your discussion.
Right.
Your explanation, but what this has done is that this has taken now an opportunity for dual enrollment away from our students, because if I'm a student and I have a packed schedule, I am not going to wanna get on a bus and go to CSM to take a class and wreck my entire high school schedule, and not allow me to get the things that I need, especially if I'm on a college or career, or I'm on a, um, a, a CTE, or, you know, a tech center track, in order to go and do this. So, um, I.
I agree that this is not a, this is not a step forward.
And, and Scott is right, all of the community colleges in Maryland, they all got together and they all formed their own little band and said, this is what we're going to now do to the public schools. So it is not just in St. Mary's County, it is across, so it is an unintended consequence of what the Blueprint was supposed to do. And then secondly, I'm now gonna take opportunities for dual enrollment away from my sophomores within our school system. Because as we continue to push down the ability for students to earn high school credits in seventh and eighth grade with our accelerated students who would be our likely dual enrolled students, that, this will now be unavailable to them, so. Shame on the community colleges.
Per the Blueprint, the, per the Blueprint, we would never have to cover the cost of a ninth or tenth grader, because they can't be designated as college and career-ready until the end of their tenth grade year after they, and they can only be considered college and career-ready if they get a four or five on their MCAP ELA-ten or their MCAP Algebra. Even though there is no three, four, or five anymore, there's just one, two, three, four. It is, this again, is, is the challenge with Blueprint, where we keep saying, this doesn't work, this is setting us back, and it falls on deaf ears.
It is, it is making it, it, I'm gonna call it, it's a money grab by the community colleges across the state, that is exactly what it is. You can't say that, I will, that's what it is.
But it's also a function of the people who dreamed up the Kerwin Commission, not the Kerwin Commission, but dreamed up the Blueprint Law, that they didn't know what we were already doing. They were surprised every time, well, we're already doing this, oh. And so now they continue to say, doesn't matter what you're doing now, you're gonna do what we tell you to do.
When the Blueprint was written, and they asked, and they asked about tuition and college courses and dual enrollments, we said, we're good, thanks. We already have a fantastic decades-long relationship with the College of Southern Maryland, where they only charge us fifty percent tuition, which then we defray, that we cover all the economically disadvantaged kids in there already. We're already doing all of this work, we're, we're good, thanks, we have a great plan, moving, we're good. And they wrote this, and unfortunately, the, the cost is unavoidable. So the cost for a, for one course, for one student, full tuition, well, seventy-five percent tuition plus related fees is four hundred and, about four hundred and ten, four hundred and, whatever, so if we've got a thousand kids, the school system has to come up with four hundred thousand dollars to pay the College of Southern Maryland. And we aren't receiving.
Money grabs, Scott.
We aren't receiving, and we aren't receiving four hundred thousand dollars from the state for this.
So when parents and students discover that we are not going to be able to offer this any longer in the school building, um, while you're certainly welcome to share your frustration with the board, um, I would direct you to the Accountability and Implementation Board, um, because that is where the change has to come from, so.
We will show you, we will show you the law as written, and the funding attendant to the law as written. And the funding only comes for the students who are college and career designated, and it is wealth equalized. So some people will say, well, you're getting, you know, here's the college and career money, well, that's, but it's also wealth equalized, which means that they only give us half of whatever money they're talking about. The other half is supposed to come from local funding.
We do expect, um, after final approval of the Program of Studies on February seventh, to do a press release to our parent community, sharing, because we also have retesting options that people or students or parents could sign up for in spring, if their student was not CCR, but wants to try to be CCR, and give them that opportunity, so that is forthcoming too.
Excellent.
So, um, I have some simpler questions.
Well, wait, we're not, we're, we're not finished with the whole presentation.
Is it on, is it on dual enrollment?
Okay, excellent, okay.
So how many classes is that really affecting?
Um, I actually have it in your addendum here, and it lists out exactly the classes, it is about eleven or twelve. Um, but as I said, the only classes, Ms. Andrews, that will not be offered in our schoolhouses are that English ten-ten and ten-twenty. Everything will, I also will still offer, it just won't be a dual enrollment opportunity available.
The, the system won't pay four hundred and ten dollars per child to CSM, so they can get a transcript.
Correct, it will still, like, there's calculus on that list, and there's pre-calculus, we'll still, of course, offer those. They just can't have it as a pre-calculus option in our schoolhouse.
Okay, and so then the other question is, will this change the budget? Because this is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, if it's approved.
Mm-hmm.
Will that, you have to go back in and change your figure, okay. So it's already in the budget, okay.
As you would, as, we're hopefully, you know, thinking that it would be approved, um, it is our, I think Ms. McCord has already budgeted in that way.
It's part, it's part of the budget presentation, and there's a, there's a slide in there that we have pulled all the dual enrollment out, and that it will only be offered through CSM on their campus, so it's already in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and the next, um, uh, uh, course completer update we have is, um, for IT networking. If you remember, in the last couple of years, we've brought many of our CETE pathways that are at the tech center to you, um, because MSD is working to take those three-year pathways down to two-year pathway opportunities. So that's what we're bringing before you for the IT networking, that we would do what is required for that pathway in MSD for those first two years, but still offer that third year if a student wants to pursue it, which is that cybersecurity class. So we'd still offer that, um, and, and actually, it can be unelective, so kids who weren't in the pathway that wanna take cybersecurity could also take that third year, um, class, but we would absolutely give preference, um, if we only had limited seats to the students who were pursuing that as their third year. Um, and then we have some pathway completer updates, this kind of goes in the same, um, thread. Um, I believe last year or the year before we came before you, and, um, had, um, shared with you MSD removed that fourth-year course from, um, Business Administration and only made it three years. Um, we got kinda caught in a snafu, um, because we have a lot of students who kind of did, we, we didn't grandfather that. We're allowed to by MSD, but we didn't do that with, for, uh, former Program of Studies. And so what we wanna do is, we wanna ensure that we go back and grandfather students who are sitting right now, um, as either seniors or juniors, so they also only have to have this requirement, um, if they wanna pursue maybe other classes and things like that, and don't take the fourth course. We still offer the fourth course, so they absolutely could take it, but they only buy MSD and the required pathway need to take those three courses.
It wouldn't preclude there being a pathway completer and interfere with their graduation.
Correct.
Yep.
Um, and then Computer Science Pathway, um, we, um, we came before you before, um, and asked that, um, the MSD said, um, for the Computer Science Pathway, the students, uh, for one of their courses could take either Advanced Placement Computer Science Principles, or they could take Computer Science Principles, that's an MSD allowance. Um, and we put that through last year, but we didn't, again, go back and put that in former, um, Program of Studies to allow our juniors and seniors to take advantage of that. So we'd like to go back and make those revisions for not only the current Program of Studies last year, but the ones, the two prior to that. Is there any questions on that? That's something we really haven't done much of before. Um, we have two course deletions, um, that we're bringing to your attention. We would like to have considered, one is an ADPA one course, and one is STEM Research. Um, ADPA course, uh, one course was absol- uh, was, uh, approved by you quite, uh, some years ago, and it has never run. We have never run that course, um, and so, um, basically, cause there's a ton of room in the schedule. So what it was designed to do was students who are new to ADPA, it would be kind of an introduction to ADPA kind of, of course, but we have not run that, um, and don't really see the need to, like, make sure it's run, do you know what I'm saying? So we really kind of looked at our programming. Um, and then the other one, STEM Research, has been, um, observed by AP Research. So that AP Seminar and Research Class that we've put in, um, has taken the place of STEM Research, so we haven't had students involved in that class or enrolled in that class. Any questions on either one of those? Um, some prerequisite changes that we want to bring your way are for Core Geometry and Geometry Honors. Um, there's always been an Algebra One prerequisite for that and it just doesn't make sense, you don't need Algebra One to be successful in geometry. So by lis- lifting that prerequisite, that gives us maybe some flexibility down the road, there are quite a few counties right now exploring doing geometry before Algebra One. So their Program of Studies goes Geometry One and then Algebra One, then Algebra Two, back to back, which kind of makes some sense, we're keeping an eye out to look at their data. To see how their kids do with that, um, but it gives us that flexibility, it also helps us greatly for students who transfer to us. Um, and putting them into classes with their cohort and things like that, so, um, we are asking that we are able to remove that, that prerequisite. Um, and then we would like to remove the grade requirements, um, for the prerequisites for Geometry Honors, Accelerated Algebra Two, Precalc and Pre-Calculus Honors. And when I mean grade requirements, it right now in the prerequisite, it says they have to have a C or better and the previous, that's what I mean by grade, not the grade band. So I want to clarify that.
So if you, if, if you. Don't, if you aren't successful in the prerequisites, what are the, what are the, what are the prerequisites for these classes?
Um, I would have to go in and look at those, exactly what the prerequisites are. But it would just, we've lifted the grade requirement for every other prerequisite in the Program of Studies other than these courses for other classes.
Okay, but in math, don't you build on what you've learned in, I mean, isn't that the purpose of the, like, aren't, aren't, aren't. If I'm taking Accelerated Algebra Two and Pre-Calculus, aren't I building on something that was in a prerequisite class that. I should have command of the knowledge of?
You should, and you have to pass the class, but you don't necessarily, like, you'll have to have passed Algebra One before you can be in Algebra Two, but you don't necessarily. And I don't have the prerequisite in front of me, I don't think you, what they're saying is you don't have to have an A or B. And I don't know if a C is in there to be in that class, you can pass with a D.
All right.
Would you, I mean, if with the D, would you do better in the next class?
You're not going to do as well as the student who has an A or B, that's for sure, yes.
Well, if you have a D, you can't get into, as of right now.
As of right now.
As of right now, if you have a D, you can't, you can't touch any of these courses.
That's right, and that's what.
That's why I'm so confused then, I guess, is to.
Well, it's, it's bring, uh, opening access to all kids and to have these courses, so if, if you remember, the College Board has removed grade requirements for any AP courses. Um, so, and this is kind of mirroring going down that line, but of course, it is for the Board to decide if you want to keep the prerequisites as is and have the grade requirements.
So, but if I, but if, okay, but if I have a D in a prerequisite class and I didn't pass the class, so then.
You did pass it.
Well, okay, I did pass it, but.
You have to, yeah, you have to pass it.
But you don't have the, you don't have the foundation of that class to then move into the next level up. You have not demonstrated, if you have a D in that class.
Let them take the class then, I guess.
Right now, the prerequisite precludes them from taking the class, and this is recommending that we take away that requirement.
So then I will let them take the class?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I don't know how I feel about that.
So I mean, again, this is a recommendation that came from staff to you, you can certainly say that.
I guess, I would just like to know like what the prerequisites are, if, if you don't mind.
Nope, not at all.
And then, I guess, even, basically, even on what the prerequisites are, if, if, if the student, what I. What I don't want to happen is if there is something that happened in the student's, what, high school life or whatever, that. All of a sudden, you know, they were very successful in Algebra One or whatever, and then the wheels fell off in their life and they didn't do well in school the second year, right? So I don't want to prevent them from going forward because of that.
Correct.
So, I guess, my question would be, what are the prerequisites for those classes and then.
What are we recommending?
Right, and, well, because you would take, because you could take these as a sophomore or a junior, correct, or a senior.
Depends on where you are in the trajectory, yeah.
On, on the track, but even if you did well on your Algebra One in middle school, like if you took it in eighth grade. Like, you know, whether or not the concepts in those classes also will help you in these. That you could look at the whole body of what the student's career was.
And I think that's the intent of this.
So just go back, Geometry Honors is you have to have at least a two point O, so you have to have at least a C. And for Accelerated Algebra Two, Pre-Calculus, you have to have a B or better. So there, there, there's incon- there's inconsistency as well.
So that I can get on board with because I can't necessarily say that if I have a B in Algebra.
It's funny, Accelerated Algebra Two, Pre-Calculus is a B or better, Geometry Honors is a two point O, Pre-Calculus Honors is a two point O. So, so those are, and, and those are the only, and those are the only courses that still exist in the Program of Studies that have a. Grade requirement at all, every, every other course just simply gives like a prerequisite, you have to have a successful completion of the previous course.
Like Algebra One before you go to Algebra Two.
And so that, I mean, I think that that's probably why this came before you, just to clear, just to clean up the program, but that doesn't mean that you, you know, you can certainly. The Board approves the Program of Studies.
Or make it standard that it's two point O.
Yeah, either make it standard that it's two point O or that you have to have a teacher recommendation, who would presumably, hopefully, understand. You know, the, the child whose, the wheels came off.
Right, yes.
As opposed to the student who, for whatever reason, really has not mastered and there's a, a consistent, not.
I will, I will tell you that we have moved away from teacher recommendations, because that is one of the most subjective measures you could ever have.
That's, that's what holds me up for that.
Mr. Smith hates me, that's why I got a D, and now I have to get his recommendation? And I've never hated anybody, I've loved all my kids, but, um. Yeah, I, I think this, why this comes before you is, is just because these are the last existing courses, and we can bring back, we can bring back more information if you'd like afterwards and see.
I can absolutely do a communication update as a, and share with you the rationale and the rationale as well as.
That would be very helpful.
prerequisite and the request. Um, and then we have an Academy's requirement change. Um, is, uh, Gray Mills High School STEM World Language requirement, right now, if you are part of the STEM Academy. You are required to have three credits of world language and we are, uh, we are asking that that is two credits, it doesn't mean STEM students can't take three, they can take. As many credits as they want, but their required courses, now that we've added health into the required courses for a STEM student. Really, really limits a lot of their ability to take courses that they want to take, and we want STEM students, just like everybody else. To have opportunities to take some, some classes that they want and that are outside of the requirements. Um, we have, um, actually reviewed colleges that our STEM students have gone to in the last few years. To see what the requirements actually are for those students in regards to world language, and, um, it was. That really they need two credits of world language, it's not the three, um, so, doesn't mean every school is like that, but the majority are like that.
Typically, it is two, and, but a lot of the colleges won't take your, they won't evaluate if it was taken in middle school.
Okay.
So they want, they want to see two credits on a high school, on a nine through twelve transcript.
Okay.
So that, that's where it jams up some of our kids in, that are taking it in eighth grade, because it's transcribed, but it's in eighth grade.
And as I said, it would not preclude any STEM stu- or any of our students to take more world language. Um, but we have heard from a number of families and students themselves, um, that it just really is not, um, you know. Um, meeting their needs and really kind of limiting them, given all the STEM requirements that we have, um, that they are required to take. Um, and then that goes to AVPA course, advanced course requirements, um, we have in for AVPA that they have to take twelve credits of advanced coursework. But we don't offer that much advanced coursework for A- A- Academy of Visual Performance Arts, usually the students are in those, that academy. Because they want to take a lot of music courses or a lot of theater courses and things like that. Um, we do have a couple, I believe we have three, it is in the addendum, shared with you, um, AP courses in the arts. Um, but this would, if we, if we lifted that, um, it would allow them to continue really focusing on those AVPA programs. And not necessarily worry so much how many of those are those advanced courses. Any questions on those? And then we would like to do some clarification on independent study. Um, and these additions, um, is just taking that, there's a page in the Program of Study talking about independent study, and we would just like to make sure that this is more clear. Because it has been a little confusing, um, by the schools and by our community, um, students and parents. So we would like to add that the purpose of an independent study is to pursue extension opportunities outside of the school day and outside of the SMCPS catalog. Course catalog, what we've had is students trying to do like an independent study during their one lunch and trying to get a teacher to do that, and that's not the purpose of an independent study. Uh, and it puts undue burden not only on the student, but, uh, on that teacher who's being asked to do that, and a lot of our teachers are just gracious and they try to do anything for a student. And the second thing is, is that we want independent study applications to be submitted by September thirtieth. Um, this time of year, I should not be getting independent study applications because it's so many hours of work to do, you can't, you, you truly can't do that. As well as all the other coursework and get that credit. Um, and then just a reminder, um, students who complete an independent study course receive independent study credit only, they're not getting. You know, an AP or a weighted credit, we absolutely have, um, virtual learning opportunities that students can take. That have credits and they have weights and we have AP courses that are available to them, um, should they want to do that, but not for an independent study. And that's all I have, but I know it did go longer than ten minutes. Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Yes, uh, Mrs. Bachner, um, at the beginning of your presentation, uh, you're talking about your committee members. And you had teachers, parents, students, community members, so my question to you is. Did you hear much on the parent participation at all in these committees?
Absolutely, I have two very, very active parents, they actually have been on the committee, um, one parent has been on the committee for three years. And one has been on for two years, I have two parents right now, um, and both of them, I believe, have seniors. So if I make a pull-up plea, I need parent representatives, um, to replace them for next year. Um, because I think the students that are in school are their youngest children, so they're exiting the committee, so, yes, I, they're very involved parents.
And then community members, anybody in particular that, not their names, but just their positions.
We have an NAACP, um, committee member that is part of, um, that is offered to be part of the committee. Um, and, but anybody can reach out to me, um, and ask to be part of the Program of Studies Committee, um, as a community member.
That's all I have, thank you.
Do you have other questions?
Thank you.
My only question, so on the EMT and the Fire Rescue, um. Within those pathways, is there an opportunity for them within the courses? Or do they have to take it as a separate class to have onsite or like on the job training or an apprenticeship or whatever it is? Do you know what I'm saying, so, if I, if, if I'm, if I'm working as an EMT and if I'm on the EMT completer.
Okay.
Right, then, can I then go and do like work as an EMT?
As an apprentice?
As an apprentice.
I will ask Mr. Boyle that, I am not sure, but I would think you do, if, if you've already completed the course and have the certification. And pass the national certification to be an EMT.
Okay.
I would think if our county government complied with what is required as part of the AMP program. Students could do that.
Okay.
And there is a requirement that in order for the students to be enrolled in these classes, um, they must be. A, a member of either a fire or a rescue company.
Well, but that, but that, so that's the piece I'm trying to catch, because if, if they are, and if they're a member of the Fire and Rescue. They're not necessarily running their calls during the school day.
Correct, correct.
So it's outside and even, so how do I? How do I give them the opportunity or the benefits of an apprenticeship or an internship or whatever within these programs? I guess is my question.
Well, within the, the programs itself, I don't think you're going to give them an apprenticeship within the program, once they're done with that program, and that's what makes it nice about being one year. If I am, if I'm pursuing EMT, I get the national registration, I get that certification, not all students do, it's very, very difficult, right? But if I have that and I still have an additional year in high school, like I'm going to have a twelfth grade, I've already completed this in eleventh grade. I would think that we could work on getting them an internship, they cannot have an internship while in this class.
Right, right, okay, I understand, but that's what I'm saying, so, since it's a one-year, here's my point, which I'm, I'm not doing a very good job of this. If it's a one-year, if it's a one-year compleer, right, then if, then they take the test. Then, within the Program of Studies booklet or within the pathway booklet, can we provide the option? That you would be eligible to either have an internship or an apprenticeship, you, just so they continue to think along those lines. Like they know that they have that opportunity available to them.
That would be what we have to coordinate with Mr. Boyle and see whether the county government would be willing to go through the process to be approved as.
Right, and it might not be for this year, I'm just saying, since, since it's only a one-year compleer, right? Let's say I have someone who's, I mean, because, you know, there's, there's kids that have been, you know, running calls since they were in ninth grade. So let's say they completed in tenth grade, take the test, they, they could have an apprenticeship or internship opportunity as a junior or senior. Right? And.
More senior probably than junior.
Right, more senior, but then, just, so it's somewhere laid out, so.
I absolutely agree, and, and it's not only for that, it's not only for EMT or for that, it's actually for all of our programs. Because they all could have, now that most of them are two-year programs, most all of them could have an apprentice. So, and, and I think it's known, but you're right, it's not laid out, so it might be good for us to lay it out.
Right, because, I mean, because I don't want it to be like in, in columns, right, I mean, and then you have to go back and forth and you have to reference or you have to read over here to understand that it applies here. Because a lot of people just don't know that, right, I mean, so.
Just keep in mind, the other portion of it is that we have currently in the Apprentice and the AMP. Tech Job Rule, I mean, about how many kids do we have?
Right now, I think about forty-one.
Forty-one, um, there isn't an unlimited capacity within the larger community to actually host.
I understand that, right.
And, and, you know, we've got, every year, we graduate twelve hundred kids, and this is the problem with a lot of the, the larger rhetoric about public schools. Where like, every single kid before they graduate from high school should have a college credit and should have a job-based experience and should be. A lot of that is beyond our, our, our scope, I, I definitely think that we need to go back with. The Tech Center in particular and really kind of talk about how we capture each one of these to say, in year three of the program. Well, and you see that throughout, in year three, here's another opportunity, here's another, to include that.
But I don't think we're as clear as we could be.
Well, right, I mean, in every, you know, the county's always screaming, we need EMTs, we need EMTs, so.
Right.
If, if we have someone that comes out in a year and, so, let's just kind of.
This is very, yeah, this is very well-aligned by breaking it out and having it as its own standalone and separate part, that really is something.
And I'm just really hopeful MSD approves this, like they said they're going to, um, timely for our kids.
So that, the only other thing with the EMT is, um. If, if there is an age requirement, that they have to be a minimum age in order, and I, I have a feeling that there may well be. That and, and for the Fire, um, potentially for Fire, but I'm, I'm pretty sure for EMT.
I think even for our program, they have to be seventeen, um, to, or sometime within when they're taking the program, turn seventeen, before they're allowed to even take our course.
So.
Because it's not available to tenth graders, that is not a program that's available to tenth, it starts in eleventh, but with the one year, it has the ability to do.
So it would be helpful also to have that information about whether or not there is an age requirement, um, minimum age. Uh, to, e- even to be able to participate in an apprenticeship. And, and that might be dependent on how we structure it, but, um, that. If there is, that the Program of Studies probably should indicate that as well.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, I think I'm done, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for, for the half-credit courses and yes.
Absolutely.
Back to the grade one again, where you're going, uh, algebra, geometry.
The mathematics?
Geometry one.
Geometry honors.
What you're trying to do is, you're trying to take the wording away, not necessarily, I mean, to me. Um, if you're struggling in one class, you know, would they be getting pushed to go to another? But you're just trying to remove the, um, prerequisite.
Yeah, the, the thing is right now, so.
You just want to remove that, but you're not necessarily, not.
We're not changing the class at all.
No, it's, it's more of, it's more of a barrier, yeah, right now, if you, if you, if you don't have a C in Algebra. You cannot get into Geometry Honors, it's, it, that class is denied to you. And if you don't have at least a B in Algebra, you can't get into the Algebra Two, Precalc Honors, it is denied to you. And we have systematically gone through over, you know, it's my thirty-third year. When I started, you know, you couldn't, everything was like a, you couldn't, you couldn't get into an AP course unless you took a special test and got like a special designation. Had a, had a B or better in the previous class and had a teacher recommendation. So let me assure you, your AP classes were the most screened group of kids you've ever seen, as well as all these other advanced courses. The, the Tech Center had a whole bunch of, you know, it, the system was set up to whittle away opportunity. To basically go and keep on filtering and sorting till you had like the best of the best and that's that. And what we have done for the. And what we have done for the last 25 years has been break down barriers, give kids a shot, get them in a class, stretch them up. Offer the opportunity, scaffold the support and watch them flourish. Our job isn't to deny kids opportunity. Our job is to provide kids opportunity. So we have these three courses left. It comes before you. It is a larger concept. I'm sure you're going to get pushed back from people that are like, you gotta have rigorous standards. Great. They're, you know, that, they're also the same people that say you probably can't eat in a restaurant unless you have a jacket. Or you shouldn't wear your hat inside, you should be kicked out. Or, you know, all of these other things. The world is evolving. And curmudgeonly old Scott, I'm getting closer to sitting on the porch in my rocking chair. But I have seen in my time that the, the wider the door, the more success you see children. And they'll always surprise you by how they mature over time. A ninth grade kid that you're like, that kid, that, that kid's destined for whatever. Over four years can transform into the most amazing young adult who has nothing but promise in front of him. And our job is to make sure that we offer them every opportunity to show us their best version. Wow, that was a soapbox.
And I agree with what the superintendent said. Oh, were you finished?
Oh, oh, no, no, I was just screaming.
I agree exactly with what he said, to give students the opportunity to flourish. Excuse me. Students grow and they mature. They may not do well in a course and get a D or whatever. But students mature, they grow and they have hope and they look at things differently. And they may want to take another course. It really is up to them. But they are not denied to take the course because of barriers that have been set up. Because some of our most successful people were at one time probably a C or a D student.
And not in poetry.
I always got good grades in English, but math, math.
There's hope for all of us.
Do you have anything?
I just very much appreciate not only the information you have in the, in the presentation, but the additional information that you provided. Because I actually started with that additional information and read through all of that first, which made the, the presentation, you know, just fly through, so.
Well, thank you. And you gave me this question last year. Can we have them correlated in order? I didn't so much do that last year. And I'm sure it was very difficult for the board, so this year they're actually in order together. So I'm sure that made it a little easier for you, but so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. It really did help and I appreciate it.
Did you have something else?
And we're going to get that paperwork.
Yep, it is actually part of the public.
It's loaded into the board docs.
Yep.
It's the second document.
Okay.
The, before, before we conclude, I just would like to thank, thank everybody who is on the Program of Studies Committee. Because it doesn't, it used to meet a couple of times a year. It meets perennially and like it, you.
Monthly.
We are all, they are, we are always, we are always talking with people about how are our kids doing? What's working? How can we tweak? How can we be better? And I know that what comes before you are a great many things ultimately for consideration each year. But that's because the conversation is ongoing and we keep on modifying what's best for kids.
Exactly.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so next up we have Ms. Burr and Ms. Stone with the Maryland report card.
And how long is this presentation supposed to be? Is this another 10 minutes?
Five minutes.
10 minute, hour and 20?
We've got a rookie at the plate, five minutes.
Look at Lisa putting up the presentation as she leaves.
Look at that. She's setting a high standard.
Taking notes down there at the end.
Yep.
See if I can actually run this. Okay. Good morning. We're here to kind of review the school year 23 Maryland School Report Card. There we go. So just as a review, for our accountability system, the report cards kind of show individual measures of school performance. Kind of banded in three summary scores. Total earned points percent, star ratings, the one star to five star, and then percentile rank where it's comparison of how schools perform relative to other schools. The framework of the accountability system remains the same since inception. There are a few additional measures that have been added over the years. But at all levels, academic achievement and progress is about 65% of the report card. And school quality and student success is about 35%. From school year 22, when Maryland, coming out of COVID and the pandemic came back to the accountability system, there were one-year changes. For school year 23, we're coming back to pre-pandemic methodology. Some of those are chronic absenteeism, where the scale was adjusted for the one-year change in 22. It's back to its original measure. Academic achievement indicators, in 22 school year, we, the state used the 11th grade cohort. Now they're back to using the 12th grade cohort. So looking at the report card of the school's performance of that 12th graders. Also student growth, that once again in 22, the difference, meaning 22, they used the fall of 21 MCAP scores and compared it to the spring of 22, so kind of a shorter timeline. School year 23 was the school growth, kind of their growth from MCAPs in 22 spring to MCAPs in 23 spring. Also, the actual methodology of the points assigned changed. In 22, it was percent of the whole. Now it's actually back to the assigned points, so kind of a lookup table. And then also for school year 23, social studies age assessment was added, kind of totaling the middle school score to 100 points. Looking at our results as a system and across the state, the chronic absenteeism and student growth kind of were the most substantial impact on our star ratings. Review of the star ratings from 2019, pre-pandemic, to 2022 and 2023. Of course, we have the star ratings, one star to five stars. In 23, we, as a system, had one five-star school, 12 four-star and 13 three-star. This slide just kind of breaks down the indicators, academic achievement, academic progress, English language proficiency, and school quality indicators across elementary, middle and high.
All right, graduation rate is one of the indicators for high school. It falls under academic progress. And the graduation rates published on the current MD report card are for school year 22. They are always lagging. The state has not released their data for 23 graduation rates, SY23 graduation rates. The new date for that is the end of February. We, they, they keep pushing it back. We have some estimates, but it's a very complicated formula, so we're waiting official data from MSD. The next slide, though, will show you our trends for SMCPS across the last several years from 2002 to 2022 there. And the last two years, we've put a bar on there showing you what the state graduation rate was compared to our county graduation rate. One of the other components in the MD report card is the Maryland School Survey. The Maryland School Survey is one of three components that comprise the school quality indicator. And the school survey offers 10 different ratings in four different areas. The areas are community, environment, relationships and safety. And then you see the subgroups listed there under each of those areas. As you can see, we have the data there from 22, school year 22 versus school year 23. And we're pretty consistent between the two years. This is a survey of 53 to 54 questions, depending on grade level, that goes out to all our 5th through 11th graders, asking them a variety of questions about their opinions about the school. And it is worth noting that in the areas of bullying, physical safety and substance abuse, those are, the state describes them as reverse-coded, where a higher score indicates less incidence. So these are all rated on a score of zero to 10. And everything you want, most of it, like respect for diversity, the higher the score, the better. But when you look at something like substance abuse, it's important to remember that a high score doesn't indicate substance abuse. It indicates an absence of because it's reverse-coded.
Can I just request, on substance abuse, and does that include vaping? Like, would that be, would that be included within that category?
I would have to look at the exact, there are sample questions. MSD puts out sample questions for the Maryland School Survey. And I honestly don't know if there was a specific, what would be two? Because every question on the school survey asks it in a positive frame and asks it in a negative frame. So, but they can compare the answers. And I don't know if there was a question specifically on vaping last year or not. And they never release the specific questions, but they do release sample questions.
Okay, I mean, I'm just curious because it, to me, I mean, if, if I'm thinking of a child or a student, that would be, to me, a substance abuse. Like if I'm, you know, and I don't know if it's thought of that way as an adult as much as it would be as a child.
I mean, I can look into that and get back to you to see if there's a sample question about it.
You can just send me an email. I'm just, I'm just really curious.
And these are our numbers, the, what you're seeing here is our average across our school system. Obviously, they vary by level too. You're going to have different answers at the high school level versus the elementary level, but these are our averages.
So do you see those disaggregated numbers in terms of, do you see grade bands in the information that's provided to you as compared to just this, this sort of average score?
We do get information and it is published on MD Report Card. You can go into each school. Actually, you can look at it by band level, by elementary, middle and high. Or you can look at a specific school. And this falls under the category of qual, school quality. And it is one of three components, so that's where it's released, but we do get more specific data, absolutely. We just wanted to give you like a general overview right now.
And Ms. Burr, in assessment accountability, we do provide, once we have the ratings, provide schools with staff and student responses and kind of the way to interpret that, so they get that information.
Good.
Now, I would, I would add what you're saying, a concern that I think any person would have is response bias. In other words, the students that are taking the exam, is there another agenda? Is there other concerns that they may or may not have in, in answering the questions? It's a, it's a, really a scientific problem, as you know, in, in doing surveying, is making sure that the response bias is eliminated because it's, it can really skew a, an answer. Give you a wrong answer, if you will.
And while we get data, Maryland, MSD contracts this out to a survey company. And while we get data back by school, we don't get student, data back by name. So neither the student survey nor the staff survey comes back attached to a name. Everyone is assigned a login number that removes their name. And then that login number is only used for accountability purposes to determine how many people actually participated.
Also going along with the survey data with chronic absenteeism, same with graduation rates. We are hoping, I think the state is looking to publish attendance data, chronic absentee, hopefully at the end of this month.
And before we fall off this, across the entire state of Maryland, 900,000 students. The average rate of chronic absenteeism across the student population is 30%. So one out of three children, over 300,000 children in the state of Maryland are considered chronically absent. And we've had multiple conversations with people about, you know, the challenges that education is having. And until this gets resolved, we really are, are up against it. The best teacher in the world, the best teacher in the world can't have a meaningful impact on a child who is not at school. And before the pandemic, it was one in five. And after the pandemic, and the pandemic is over, it's one in three. Really, really a challenging, and this is what everybody should be talking about. Because this is sits, this sits right in who is most responsible for this and its parents.
And remind us what constitutes chronic absenteeism?
What's the official definition of a chronically absent student?
How many days?
10% of the student's membership. So for example, that we've been given, if a student is in membership, enrolled with a school system for 30 days and they're absent three days, they're considered chronically absent.
But if you're.
Long or unlong.
Correct.
Doesn't matter if it's an excused absence.
So if you, so the regular school year, 180 days, if you're absent 18, 19 days in a school year, you would be considered chronically absent. Again, not our, not our definition. It's the school system's definition. And as a result, that's why all, that's why we don't have fives.
Across our board, yep.
That's why all of our fives, five of our fives went to fours and why some of our fours went to threes. And that's because not only are we getting hit by the measure, we're being hit by the impact of parents not sending their kids to school and making sure that their kids are consistently in school. Talk to any teacher and they'll tell you that's the greatest challenge that they have.
Of course, all the information is located on mdreportcard.org. Assessment and accountability also provides schools with an Excel file. The report card does show by student groups, kind of overall performance, also MCAP. But the Excel file allows a school to kind of look at a specific student group across all measures or to look at specific measure, such as students not chronically absent, across all student groups and kind of dig in after that. And then, of course, finally, the report card is lagging data. It's, it's in the past. Throughout the school year, teachers, students, teachers, schools and instructional leaders kind of use leading data that's coming from the classroom, coming from local assessments. They also have looked at their MCAP results from SY23. They've done reflections. They have action steps. At this mid-year point, looking at student performance, kind of what evidence students are providing in the classroom on local assessments. They're going to kind of looking and revising or reviewing their action steps. Also, along with assessment accountability, Student Services work very closely with the schools and provide monthly updates on attendance. Also periodic checks of climate, culture, discipline, attendance. And then we also do provide monthly, if not multiple times a month, grade distribution reports. So that secondary schools can kind of look at their distribution of grades, As through Fs throughout the classroom and DNF reports. And any questions?
And for me?
Can you go back to six, please? I'm sorry, my screen.
Page six.
My power, my power went down.
Oh, page six.
Yes. English language proficiency, I'm kind of focusing on the middle and high school. The middle is really low. Does it tell you what schools?
We do have, for SY23, there were seven schools that reported.
Seven schools.
Seven schools. At the middle school, it was Spring Ridge. I think that was our only middle school that has a population of English language learners that are being reported.
Oh, that's just for English language learners.
And at the high school, we have Great Mills High and also Lenartown High School.
And it has to be a statistically significant subgroup and the state defines that as more than 10 students. So that doesn't mean we don't have English language learners in our other schools. It just means that the subgroup is 10 or less.
It's, it's not an English class or it's not, or on an English class. It's, 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 yeah, it's kids who, English is their second language.
Okay, so this is based on their testing?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha. That's what I was missing.
And that's assessed through a consortium test. It's a test that's given over several states. So it's not a Maryland test. It's a test from a company called WIDA.
Okay, okay.
And so going all the way back to the superintendent's report, so when I went down to Spring Ridge Middle School and I was with Ms. McGlor, McGlorith.
You cannot say that word.
McGlothlin, McGlothlin, McGlothlin. That's it, okay. And Ms. Ramos, Ms. Ramos, I got that one. Those ESOL kids, like that is, that is one of the challenges that St. Mary's County is facing is we have ELL kids, ESOL kids coming in, English language, you know, second, coming in. And they come in throughout the entire year. They don't, they're not following a traditional pattern of, you know, enrolling their kids July 1 and going through. They might come into the community midway through the year and that child may not have had, you know, consistent formal instruction in, in English or perhaps whatever their native language might be. And they sit for a test regardless. And those are the results. And that then becomes part of the scorecard. So Spring Ridge is the only middle school that had that as a component P. So Spring Ridge is the only middle school that had that as a component piece of their star rating. And, you know, so it's like, so challenge on top, on top of challenge, on top of challenge, and there, and there you have it. So I mean, it, you, you have rightfully zeroed in on one of the, one of the challenges public education is facing in the state of Maryland, specifically in St. Mary's County.
Thank you.
I don't have anything. Thank you very much.
What is, what's concerning to me is the chronic absenteeism. And, and it's been said it's the parent's responsibility to make sure the student attends school. I know a mother, single mother, parent of one child, who refuses to go to school. He, this child has caused their mother mental and physical anguish because he will not go to school. We have the data to go down to the individual student. And we need to continue to reach out to see what is the problem with this particular child that this student does not want to go to school. I have reached out to people in the system about this family, and the student still doesn't go to school. Some children are very strong will and their parents have very little control over them. And that's where our social workers, our psychologists come into play. Um, I was told the superintendent did a presentation with the NAACP and he highlighted this problem. So could you share with us some of the solutions that you have to address this problem of chronic, um, absenteeism of students?
Yeah, I, well, so what I'd love to do is, um, at the next board meeting, we can certainly have Student Services come forward and, and talk about this data, unpacking this data specifically as well as what we can do as a system. And then very clearly lay out that at a certain point, the school system can't do anything more. We are not that child's parent. We do not control the environment that they are in at home. We cannot go and physically remove the child from the school and, or from the home and bring them to school. At that point, we then need to look to our, our partnering groups within county government, the state's attorney's office, and, and what we can put through to, to actually compel some behavior. Because the school system has as a tool, all the way, the only thing at the very, the worst thing that we can possibly do is we can suspend a student. That's it. That's, that's, that's the, the, the most dire consequence. The, the only tool that we have in our entire chest is we can suspend a student or we can fail a student and they would not earn credit. Like that's, that's it. We don't have any other ramification beyond that. So I, we, we definitely see challenges that parents are having in the community with their children. But I, you know, I think a great presentation coming and bringing in perhaps people from Student Services as well as maybe some of our community partners to talk about the resources that are available out there and the process in general.
If we're going to have that presentation, I'm also, based on what you said, I'm, I'm curious to see how transient our ESOL population is of children.
We can bring in all the mobility data, yeah.
You know, and how many of them are with us for the entire year? Or, you know, you know, for a few months or weeks, you know, based on job movement or family, things like that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We, I mean, we definitely, just in January alone, we've, we've, we've seen, uh, double-digit children enter the school system.
Right, okay.
And remember those students we don't get, we don't get funding for.
Right. If they, if they enter now and, and, and then don't, and don't exist on their roster next year, come September thirtieth, we've received, well, we received no funding for them this year, but we will receive no funding for them next year either.
I just, I just need armed with more information.
I understand. It's just that, you know, given that we're going to do our budget work session.
I got it, Kathy. We got it.
And I look forward to your presentation on that about students who are chronically absent. That, uh, what efforts have been made to reach each student on an individual level? Face to face, what is going on with you? Why don't you want to come to school? What's going on? Because if we don't find a solution for those students, we're going to pay for them later.
Right.
Not only them, but their families, and it can be a generational dysfunction. You know, if we don't get a grip on this problem. And like you say, it's only so much we can do. But it is a legal requirement that they come to school.
Absolutely.
And we have to find out what's going to work for the individual child. So I'm looking forward to hearing that, um, presentation because that, hearing that parent talk in her tears broke my heart.
Right.
That she's doing everything she can.
Absolutely.
And it's causing her physical, emotional stress and trauma every day of her life trying to get that student to go to school.
Right, right. Oh, absolutely. And working, uh, working parents. And, and especially, you know, the, the tragic story of the, of the truly working poor where you might be working two or three jobs and still exist below the federal poverty level. Um, yeah, that really, you know, there are, there are a great many challenges that's, that end up at the doorstep of school systems.
Absolutely.
And we continue to say, we need to, we're up for it. We just need to have the resources to be able to truly do the work.
Kathy, do you have anything?
Nope, I don't have anything else. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up, Dr. Marr.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I think this may be a record in terms of the number of times I've come to you with the calendar, uh, over the last couple of years. But this time is like the, this is the, the full school year, fresh, uh, look for, uh, the next two years. And, and as we've presented in the past, uh, we found that presenting two years of a calendar gives families time to plan. Um, we've also found a lot of consistencies in what works within our calendar as well. So, so what I'll be presenting, uh, you'll find is very familiar because there are some things that, that over time, our community, our schools, and our calendar committee have found certain days work well within for us and our families. So first of all, we do have a, a, a system of gathering input. Uh, we have a committee that includes multiple stakeholders, parents, guardians. Um, there are a few of them who have been with the committee for several years and several cycles. And we also have some new families, new parents who have joined the committee, uh, last year and new ones this year as well. Uh, students, we gather input through Slack, as, as you know, the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council. We have members from, uh, both of our associations, both ISMAC and SMASA, who are part of the team. And then we have teachers, support staff, principals, and central office staff who are also part of that. Uh, it then meets to develop recommendations to bring forward to you, uh, for action. And so, uh, as a result of their work, a, a survey was, um, put out to the community. Uh, for, and I have the results of that that I'll be sharing, uh, that the, the committee looked at. The committee met a couple of times in November, as well as some online interactions outside of those formal meetings to, to, to share questions back and forth. And then, of course, we're bringing it to you today for your first reading. We'll have a public hearing for, uh, anyone to, to come forward and make comment, uh, on January thirty-first. And then February seventh, we'll bring it forward to you again for action. So, uh, in terms of the calendar committee's work, uh, the calendar committee meets to not only look at what, uh, questions, uh, have been asked throughout the year, but what the survey then tells us. And so you'll find that this year there were four thousand responses, so there was a lot of data to look at. Um, and then we look at the parameters that I'll be sharing with you in, in a second because a lot of the, the calendar is developed based on very specific guidelines and guardrails by the state. Uh, and then we look at our specific start dates, end dates, holiday breaks, and then any other guidance. And there's some new ones this year, uh, so I will be sharing that as well. So the first thing is to look, a hundred and eighty means a hundred and eighty. So that's it. That's the main game, is a hundred and eighty school days that have to fall within, uh, the beginning of our year to the end of our year. In addition, we also have to look at ensuring we have a hundred and ninety days for staff, uh, teachers and ten-month staff, uh, twelve, two hundred and twelve for our eleven-month staff, um, and two hundred and forty-nine for our twelve-month staff. In addition to that, we have hours. So our full school day, uh, has to total a hundred and eighty of them, uh, has to total eleven thousand, eleven hundred and seventy for our secondary students and that, one thousand eighty for our elementary and middle school students. That becomes important when we look at the number of early dismissals that we built into the calendar as well as accounting for any late arrivals because of inclement weather or early dismissals because of inclement weather, because at the end of the year, we still have to hit those hours. Uh, so we have additional time in our school day that allows for that. But also, we can't have too many early dismissals to make sure that we meet that hour count. At the bottom, you'll notice a couple of other footnotes. We've traditionally built in five inclement weather days, and that includes three at the end of the year. So the hundred and eighty actually means a hundred and eighty-three when you add up all the days scheduled. Because we, on average, use about three to four days a school year. Three is about the norm. Um, last year, we used none at all. Um, and so when we have years like that, we chop the days off the end of the year. We end the school year at a hundred and eighty days versus a hundred and eighty-three that are scheduled. So, uh, we also have built in two other emergency days outside of those three at the end of the year. And I'll talk more about those later, but they are President's Day and the Monday following the, the spring break. So that if we have to, if we use up too many snow days in the winter, we have days that we can add so that we're not extending the school year beyond what is already scheduled. We also have, uh, specific days in the calendar that we're required to be off, uh, by, by law. Um, and those are there. In addition to these, uh, we also have, uh, Juneteenth. That is, that is now part of, uh, the, the, the law, but that is, that falls after the school year. So you'll see that that, um, that is on this next page here. So we have also County Fair Day, uh, Wednesday before Thanksgiving, Veterans Day, Midyear Professional Day we've had, and then the week before Easter. So all of those, um, days have added up, uh, to, to look at things that we need to look at when we're building the calendar. When we look at the, uh, modification of the calendar, all right? So in order for us to, uh, to modify the calendar, we have to have three days added to the end of the school year. Now, I bring that up only because, um, if we look at, uh, any, any waiver that we have to request. So if you remember the blizzard of twenty-ten, uh, where we used ten or eleven school days, uh, that, that meant we would have had to have had a full week of school back. Because of the fact that we have the days added at the end of the school year, we do have the option of then asking for a waiver from the state that would allow us to waive those five days, and we've done that in the past. Um, we also are allowed to ask for a waiver if we end up with our last day on a Monday. And we've had that happen before where the changing of the date. So, um, stay tuned. There might be more on this. It's a little teaser. Uh, we'll talk more about that in a minute as well. Okay, so here's the survey that we gave out to the community, four thousand forty responses, um, which I think is, is, might be our highest. We typically have between two and three thousand. Uh, it was a pretty good split. About half of them were parent, and then you add in another fifteen percent that are both staff and parent. We had fourteen percent students. That's actually a pretty high number of student responses. Typically, that's about five to seven percent. And then a handful of community members, as well as about twenty percent of the respondents being staff as well. So when we look at what the responses are, you see it's a pretty comprehensive look at our stakeholders. The first question we ask is, and this really is a holdover question from, uh, the legislation that was passed about five years ago that had said, "Start after Labor Day." And then, well, do we start before or after Labor Day? You'll notice that it's pretty split, but it kind of has started to slide a little bit more to the right. That is, more people support, uh, support starting where we are, a week and a half before Labor Day. That's quite a difference than what it was before because we, over time, people realize if you start after Labor Day, you have to have a shorter winter break and you have to end the school year later. So this is a trade-off, um, and you'll see that data come through as well when we look at days off. So in addition to starting af- before Labor Day, we also see that they, that Veterans Day is a very important day to have off, while not required. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving, also important, and a full week of spring break. Now, if you look around the state, that's not always the case. Many, uh, school systems start, uh, a, a couple of days before Easter and then go through the Monday after. Um, we've, we have that full week before, and that seems to be, to be favored year after year. And we asked about winter break because we have, over the last couple of years, had an extended winter break to allow time for families to take vacations, and we are a, a military community, so it allows families time to travel, uh, in and around those holidays. Uh, we asked, what's your preference? Because the law requires that we're closed just between, uh, the twenty-fourth and January first. You'll see that that was the lowest choice. Uh, most people want between ten days and two weeks, and so that was something to carry over from our calendar. Um, and then early dismissals, too. We know that we have them. Uh, it always comes up, do we have it just? We've had it on Fridays the last, uh, you know, uh, several rounds of the calendars. Um, and that seems to be favored by families especially. It's just keep it on the consistent thing. If we bounce it around, uh, it may, it, it's sometimes a challenge for school scheduling because you have A-day, B-day kind of schedules, but, um, it seems to be favored across the board, about ninety percent of the respondents. Now, this year, we had two virtual days that we built in. We had, um, the Parent Conference Day on, um, in October, which is Indigenous People Columbus Day, that day that we've used. And it had been a, uh, previously scheduled early release day that we, um, used the waiver application through the state to use that as a virtual day that allowed for those parent conferences. We also have one built in this calendar year for March. We're going to be allowed to do that this year. However, in this last legislative session, Senate Bill Six Ten was put in place to allow for school systems to use inclement weather days and make those virtual learning. We also know that that creates challenges for families and, and others if they don't have equipment and technology or power outages that would happen, et cetera. Um, so we're allowed to keep those days in this year. However, moving forward, the, the virtual days through this legislation are only to provide for makeup days. We will not be able to provide, um, uh, virtual learning days as part of our regular calendar. So if we were to go beyond the days scheduled, day, we have three plus two, we would then have to ask for, if we add another day, can we make it virtual? That would have to go beyond our scheduled days. We received some clarification this week that even looking, because the draft calendar you're about to review has those emergency days, uh, and in February and, uh, April, as I just shared, as makeup days, we were intending to make those virtual. We were told this week that may not be possible. So, uh, I'm seeking further clarification, and I will have a firm answer by the time we come back for action. But stay tuned on that, and I'll talk more about that. Yes, ma'am?
Before you go on, just because we are on this page, the very last bullet, um, saying that we can only provide a day of virtual education if the LEA has used all the days incorporated into its calendar for school closures.
That's correct.
But technically, those last three days of the school year are incorporated into the school calendar. So we would never be able to offer a virtual day.
Long story short.
Right.
Virtual days are done.
Yeah, so it, it's interesting because of the fact that you have to build in three additional days, but you can't use those. But this, so I think that may be one of those where, why we have to ask for further clarification because that's an inter- uh, a case where the statute does not match what's in COMAR. Because COMAR says you have to build in these three additional days. This one says you can use those inclement days as virtual, but, so we're, we're trying to get a little bit. There was a technical assistance meeting on Tuesday of this week that we went to. We're going to go back. There's another one next week, and we're going to bring back addition, any additional questions that you ask. And that's a, that's a really good one, so.
Because, I mean, truly, the, the last three days of the year are incorporated into the calendar, which would mean we would have to extend beyond the school year to be able to offer virtual education. So in the event that, you know, we had another snowmageddon and ten days off, we could make those last five days virtual. Like, that's really going to do anything for kids.
I, I absolutely understand. Um, the, the answer we got was, well, you have those built into your calendar, so they're part of your calendar. So it doesn't meet the letter of the law, which is to extend your calendar. So I, we, we, we absolutely need more clarification and, and further guidance on that. Um, but we are working on it, and I, and I hope to have further answers. If not, then we will, those, those options for, uh, virtual as makeup days will just come off the calendar because we, we've said that for inclement weather days, we will, they're, they're days off because we had the days built in.
A snow day will be a snow day.
That's correct. All right, so, um, moving right along, I'm, I'm going to move through these rather quickly. It's all in front of you. But, uh, you'll see a very, uh, similar schedule as we've had in the past. Um, obviously, July is, there's not many things on there except for Independence Day. We would then begin with our teachers, uh, in the, and you've got two columns, by the way. You have the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and the twenty-five, twenty-six because we're presenting both of them. So you see when the, the professional days that start, and we do find, have five days built in at the beginning, including, uh, and prior to that would be the new teacher orientation. Um, and then similarly, on the right column, you see the Chesapeake Public Charter School. And Ms. Funy is here, too, if at the end you have any questions about her, about their, the calendar for the, for the charter school. Um, and you see as, as well, the, the different early dismissals as well. But the day would open for students would be the twenty-first of August and the twentieth of August in twenty-twenty-five.
And on that one, where although it doesn't say under SMCPS. And on that one, where although it doesn't say under SMCPS, new teachers orientation for the sixth through the eighth and fifth through the seventh?
It would be, it would fall then the week before, so the, it would be the, probably the, the twelfth, thirteenth, I think, in that higher one. I, I'd have to look at the, actually, hold on a second.
I did look at the calendar, and as looking at it, it appears that our new teacher orientation...
It would be the seven, eight, nine, seven, eight, nine of August.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they, they usually come three days, the, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday prior to, and we'll have that on the final calendar. Thank you for that. And then you see, obviously, with Labor Day, and then you see early dismissals for professional responsibilities, that there's one provided per month as well. And then the professional day in September for students, that's the fair day, that third week of September. Again, if we move to October, we have an early dismissal for parent conference day. Again, this year, we had virtual, but then next year would be a full day, with then following, the following Friday, the early dismissal for professional responsibilities, which would be, and then the end of the first marking period, which then follows the week later. Okay? Moving into November, there is an election day in 2024, so that would be a day off. And then in addition to that, we have the early dismissal, but Veterans Day, all schools will be closed as well, and then Thanksgiving break that begins that Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. In December, you'll notice that because the holiday, the Christmas holiday falls in the middle of the week, it actually, the, the Friday before would be the beginning part of, of winter break with an early dismissal, then going through with students returning on January, January third, I believe, and then, excuse me, January sixth, the, the holiday would be on that Friday before, so. I have to look both at the, the, the grid here as well as the, the chart to get that. So, so, yes, so January sixth, the, the week, it would fall that week after. And then you'll see that we have a professional day at the end of January as well, with schools closed for Dr. King Day on the twentieth and the nineteenth, respectively. Moving forward, February, just the professional responsibilities days that are built in for early dismissals, as well as President's Day, and again, that one is listed there as a possible inclement weather day. That makeup day would remain, but if the state guidance is that we would not be able to use virtual day, then that language about the asynchronous virtual day would come off. Moving right along into March, you'll see that that is a full month with spring break coming at the end of the month rather than the third week or so of, of March as it was this past year, with then spring break falling in April, returning for students on April twenty, excuse me, I have to look, because there's two different days in April, it would be returning on the twenty-second of April for after spring break. So it's a really late spring break next year, the following year, it turns to the first week of April. And then, of course, May, we look at May with the early dismissal, as well as the holiday for Memorial Day, and then the commencements that line up on those days as well. And then our last day for students in 2025 would be then on June eleventh, with the last day for teachers being on the thirteenth. So that is the calendar as it's presented. We will have a public hearing on the thirty-first, and we will also be publishing this draft calendar in the format that is like, looks like a calendar, versus the chart like that, for, for folks to look at as well. Public hearing on the thirty-first, your action would be on February seventh, and so I ask if you have any comments or questions.
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Nope. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Ms. McCourt. Our December financial report.
No? Question? Did it continue?
Good morning. Before you is the December financial report. With regard to revenues, we have received one hundred and seventy-nine point eight million dollars of the two hundred and eighty-four point nine million dollar budget, representing sixty-three point eleven percent, so just over fifty percent at the fifty percent mark. On the expenditure side, there are no particular areas of note. We have encumbrances outstanding of one hundred and forty-seven point two million dollars, and encumbrances plus year-to-date expenses total two hundred and sixty-three point two million dollars, representing ninety-two point three nine percent of the budget year-to-date. Are there any questions?
No.
Okay, no? All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. So our next board meeting is on January seventeenth, executive session at five, and the open session is at six, and then we are adjourned now.
And if you give us a five-minute, ten-minute recess.
Ten minutes, because we have to switch the tapes.
Okay.
So, ten.